Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, where are we at? November 19th, 2025, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
We don't have minutes tonight, so first up is a sign permit application for sign dash three, six, four, eight, four, dash, twenty, twenty-five. Major sign waiver request for a temporary banner sign at Six Montgomery Village Avenue in the C two general commercial zone. Jasmine, who's doing that one?
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
Good evening. So Staff, please present sign application S I G N dash three, six, four, eight, nine, eight, four, dash, twenty, twenty-five. I'm showing on the screen, the subject property is located at Six Montgomery Village Avenue. The applicant is requesting a major sign waiver for a temporary banner sign pursuant to section twenty-four dash eight point seven of the city code. The planning commission has the authority to grant a major sign waiver due to special circumstances that result in an unusual hardship in an individual case. And I will have Mariella, who's the applicant, will do the presentation.
Great, thanks. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mariella. I'm the marketing coordinator here at Avacyn Young. This is Bud Wrightson, and he is the broker for this listing.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, so we're requesting a temporary banner. It's a four by thirty-foot leasing banner on the building for longer than ninety days. This is based on the property's site conditions. The building sits at a busy intersection on Montgomery Village Ave. So the cars are moving at higher speeds and, which makes it difficult to view the signage far back from the road. Because of the distance and the side of the facade, we're requesting not a standard-sized banner and something that we can read safely by drivers and pedestrians. The banner we're proposing is the minimum size needed to make the message legible from the public right-of-way without distraction. It doesn't block any sightlines. It doesn't interfere with traffic or pedestrians, and it's a simple black-and-white design for less minimal visual distraction, which you can see here. We've mocked it up. The purpose of this banner is to market the available office space with the building, which directly supports occupancy and contributes to the business community here in Gaithersburg. A fully leased building brings employers, employees, and daily activity to the corridor, strengthening the businesses and helping keep the city's commercial inventory healthy and competitive. Before requesting this waiver, we explored different signage options, and we actually submitted an in-ground permit application, but that was in an optimal location, sorry. And it was denied because it was on right-of-way grass. So we relocated the sign further back to comply, and the new location sits behind trees, and it's not very visible from the road anymore. So yes, that is.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The owner hired us recently and said, can you guys, we're about fifty percent occupancy, so he said, could you get more tenants? I said, well, if we have a sign that people could read, we'll get more calls, and we'll try to do more transactions. So we're trying to get the building up to ninety or a hundred percent as soon as we can. So having this sign will give us a little more exposure to the marketplace and try to do more transactions for the new ownership.
Okay, great. Any other, any questions, please?
Just, just one. So, I mean, I know this is extending it, but when might you remove it? Can you get to ninety percent?
Well, our leasing agreement's about a year.
Okay.
You know, on the building, so I'm hoping we can get some activity and lease it up. But I think the sign will maybe give us more exposure to the
Sure.
cars driving by at fifty percent. But we're, we're hoping that we'll, we'll, we'll complete the task in a year, hopefully. But the market's a little soft right now, and we're trying to be very aggressive to get as many transactions as we can.
Okay. I think we're aware of that and try to be sympathetic. Let me, let me follow up your question to staff, though. Jasmine?
Yeah.
Just kind of in a two-part quickie here. The approval is, is for the, so what would, what would be the allowable duration and size for a temporary banner?
So for, in the code, they're allowed to have forty-eight square feet for a temporary building, and they can be up for three months within a
Yeah, ninety days.
No, I'm sorry, ninety days, within a twelve-month period.
Mm-hmm. For only ninety days within a twelve-month period?
Yep.
Okay. So we're going for a hundred and twenty square feet for a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
But scale of the building has something to do with this, too. Okay.
This is an exceptional, yeah, no.
Okay. Let me check and see if anybody wants to comment on this online, or let me ask also, is there anybody here in the audience that is going to comment on this application? I have a suspicion not, that everybody else is for the next application. If there's anybody online, please do hit your hands-up button, and we'll recognize you if you want to speak on this application. And I'm not seeing anything go off. Staff, please help me if I'm missing anything.
Nope, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So with that, what's the recommendation, please?
So Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant a major waiver for sign dash three, six, four, eight, four, dash, twenty, twenty-five, finding in compliance with section twenty-four dash eight point seven B of the city's zoning ordinance with one condition, and that condition is the applicant should remove the banner sign no la, no later than one year after the planning commission's approval date of November nineteenth, twenty, twenty-six.
Okay. And they could apply for, I guess, an extension if they wanted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is there, this is a net, I know, but there, not under this code or just guidelines from the staff, ways that it's attached to the building to ensure that it doesn't, you know, flap around in the breeze and all that? You guys have that under
Yep. So we have, and of course, we have to double-check to make sure the signs are properly posted on the, the building.
So Jasmine, you wanted to get all the way up there?
Who's that hanging off the building? That looks like Jasmine. All right. Any, any concerns? Any comments?
No, I think it's understated enough, but yet tasteful enough to be up the top of the building without being too offensive.
Tasteful without being gaudy. You're gonna, it sounds like a wine review.
Yeah, I think you, you marked one of them, John, but a couple of the unique conditions for this singular property for us to, I think, sort of value this application is just the size of the building, as you said, the amount of mature trees that are on that east side, and the large, you know, grown-in shrubberies. This is a slightly older building, obviously, so it's got some nice grown-in shrubberies, and we'd hate to wreck that with a, a sign. It's, I think it's a nice amenity for a suburban office building. And then, and then just a thank you to not have to do the, send the community services after you. So coming in for a permit, I know it's pain, but it's a wonderful thing. So thank you.
Yeah, but also the lead-in about the traffic being very busy, busy corner, and you want people to notice.
Six lanes.
Yeah.
Right.
This is not unreasonable.
Great.
Yeah, and so to, to add to findings specifically, Matt, just to kind of give it some quantity, a banner this size, a hundred and twenty square feet on a sixth-story, seventh-story, six?
Sixth-story.
Sixth-story. The top of a six-story building is going to have far less visual impact than the same sign at, at fifteen feet off the ground on a two-story building. So I think there's some, there's some appropriateness to scaling it up because it's farther away, just by virtue of how high off the ground it is. And I don't have any real reservations with this, so any, any issues there?
People aren't stuck in traffic there anymore because we have the interstate. So they do go faster. It used to be a failing intersection. There'd be a lot of traffic.
We wouldn't have this sign if we hadn't, hadn't built the intersection, I guess. No, come on. Well, I, I do hope, I do hope this helps, because we certainly have been tracking office vacancy rates around the city, and it's something to be at least concerned about, if not worried.
Sure.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I remove that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendations grant a major waiver for sign three, six, four, eight, four, dash, two, zero, two, five, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash eight point seven B of the city's zoning ordinance with one condition that was written to the record.
Second. It's moved in second. If you'd like, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes unanimously. Good luck, and again, thanks for, as Matt said, for coming in and doing this the
Don't hang out the window.
No, no, no.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Y'all, have a good evening.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up is a site plan. We have one site plan on the site plan agenda tonight. That's for SP dash one, zero, one, seven, seven, dash, twenty, twenty-five, to construct a new two thousand three hundred and eighty-five-square-foot Chipotle building and modify the existing site to include a daycare playground at eighty-nine, fifty Northwestland Drive in the C two general commercial zone. This is the final site plan, and Isaii, new to the staff, is presenting tonight. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. Staff is before you to present final site plan application, SP dash one, zero, one, seven, seven, dash, two, zero, two, five. The subject property is located at eighty, eighty-nine, fifty Northwestland Drive within the Walnut Hill Shopping Center in adjacent, and adjacent to Northwestland Drive. The area currently contains a one-story, two thousand forty-square-foot vacant bank building. The applicant is requesting approval for a new two thousand three hundred and eighty-five square-foot Chipotle restaurant and to modify the existing site to include a daycare playground. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four dash one, two point six, B three of the zoning ordinance, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. The applicant has also submitted final force conservation plan application, E N V dash zero, one, zero, seven, six, dash, two, zero, two, five, pursuant to section twenty-two of the city code. I would like to note that since the agenda packet was posted, the applicant has been working with the county to improve the existing sidewalk on Northwestland Drive. There are no streetlights along Northwestland Drive, so the county has requested that the applicant to install lighting. Therefore, an additional condition has been included to address this. Now we'll have the applicant or the applicant's attorney to start the presentation.
Isaii, let me just stop you real quick, because you said an additional condition to the, what's been written, so there's three now?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners, for hearing the application tonight. Thank you, Jasmine and Greg and staff. Been excellent to work with and a real breath of fresh air as we've gone through the process, so great, great to work with the, the city. So just to orient you to the property here
Do me a favor, just, just with a record, name, please, for
I'm sorry. My name's Jake DiPiazza. I'm with Granite Canyon Partners. We're the managing member of the shopping center. And just to orient you to the shopping center, we are on the north side of South Frederick Avenue, just north of Shady Grove Road and three seventy. Here's an aerial image of the property as it is today. And then here's just another image from a top-down view of the property prior to the renovation. So the area that's in question tonight is the north parking lot and also kind of the lower lot as you view the property. There's an upper lot on the south side, a kind of a main-level lot facing three fifty-five, and then a lower lot that faces Northwestland. Site is currently zoned C two after our annexation into the city. And then I just wanted to spend a couple of quick minutes here going through the history of the site, so I've got a couple of photos that just show the site, its prior condition prior to our annexation and our renovation. So that's the former grocery space, the former facade for the small shops here. This is the lower level prior to our renovation, and this is the area that we're, that is in question today. I would note, too, that there's two roll-up doors here that we'll discuss later. And then this is the big kind of empty brick wall where we installed a mural as part of our renovation. So here's some photos, just since we completed the renovation. This is the Aldi and Concentra, which are both now open. And here's a view of the small shop spaces, a view of this portion of the shopping center where there's a common breezeway area for gathering, which was a big part of our community outreach. You can see that here. And then here's another view of that new mural that's on the wall, and we, we think we've done a great job at the shopping center, kind of completely bringing it up to date, increasing the traffic, attracting better tenants, and meeting the community's needs in a much, much better way. Part of our previous approvals include the Sheetz Gas Station and Convenience Store, which will be breaking ground here in late December or early January. They're located at the south, southwest corner of the property. And then part of our annexation agreement stipulates that we install electronic charging, EV charging stations, which will be located along three fifty-five near the Bank of America. Those are currently under construction, and here's a photo from just last week. We expect these to be up and running in the next three or four weeks as soon as they get Pepco connection. So the north parking lot is the area that we're discussing tonight. This is the existing conditions. We have a one-story brick building, approximately two thousand square feet, and then a really wide-open parking area down here. There is a seven-eleven tenant that's currently in existence down here, and the rest of the lower level is currently vacant. There are three existing curb cuts along Northwestland, one on the north page here, which is primary access as, for delivery vehicles as they come through the back of the site. There is a, another curb cut just north of the building here, and then the main curb cut that is, enters with the drive aisle heading up towards Aldi and Concentra here. The existing one-story brick building has had several uses in the past. Its original use was a bank, so it does have an old drive-through that hasn't been used in some time, but there is infrastructure there today for it. This is the current condition of the lower level after our renovation, and this is the proposed location for the daycare tenant. The daycare tenant that we have assigned lease for is Lightbridge, and we're really excited to bring that use to the community. We had a lot of community discussion and outreach about the need for additional childcare in the city of Gaithersburg and in the broader Montgomery County market. So here's the building that we are proposing to demolish and replace with the Chipotle. So there's three different views of it here, and we really view this as kind of like the last piece of the puzzle for Walnut Hill. It's the only building here that really hasn't been touched, hasn't been updated. As part of our annexation, we, we toyed with trying to re-lease it, which we have done. We tried to actually fit Chipotle in this building, but it just didn't work operationally for them with the size and the current configuration. And I don't think anyone's crying about seeing this beautiful building be demolished, but we are proposing to take this down and replace roughly in the same location with a ground-up prototype Chipotle. So here is the proposed site plan. I'll just spend a couple of brief minutes off on this one and then switch to the, the rendered site plan. But we are proposing to eliminate one of the curb cuts on Northwestland that's currently in this area here. We think that will allow for better circulation through the site and also create less of, a safer condition where we don't have three different curb cuts coming right out onto Northwestland in such a small area. The entrance to the daycare is in this location around here. The seven-elevens entrance is over here, and then, as you can see, the Chipotle pickup lane is parallel to Northwestland on the north side of the site. Couple of things to highlight here. We spent a lot of time with staff and tried to incorporate a lot of their comments. One of the most important things we focused on was pedestrian connectivity, so we really made sure we have sidewalks going throughout the site. We've got multiple crosswalks here, so if you're parking towards the rear of the center or in this area here, there's easy access around to get into the Lightbridge daycare area or walk under the canopy here up to Aldi and Concentra. If you're coming from three fifty-five, down to the shopping center at the corner of Northwestland, there's three different access points onto the sidewalk there for people to walk over and, and eat at the Chipotle or to come up and shop in the shopping center or, or go to the Bank of America. We've done a lot of landscape improvements down here and, and have reduced the amount of pervious, or impervious pavement in the area. You can see it today out there. There's maybe one or two trees in this area, which we will maintain, but all these other trees here are all brand-new and, and nonexistent today. One thing I will point out with the Chipotle Lane, as, as Chipotle calls it, is this is not a traditional, a traditional drive-through like you might think of at a, at another fast casual or fast-food restaurant. This is a pickup window only, so there's no ordering done here. And we do have stacking for up to six cars, but based on what we've heard from Chipotle, they rarely have more than one or two in line here because they're so quick to pick up. The cars pull in, their order's already, already been placed, and they come up to the window and grab their food and then drive on. If for some reason the food is not ready, what we've designed here for Chipotle is a little pull-off area where that customer can pull to the side here, and the Chipotle employee can run out their food along the sidewalk and hand it to them if for some reason it's not quite ready. One of the concerns that staff and county had was the, the congestion at this area here. We currently have one really large, wide entrance into the lower level. There's also the entrance into the Bank of America drive-through here, and so what we did to address that is make the exit from the Chipotle lane a right-out only. So if you're coming through and picking up your food, you'll head right out to Northwestland versus trying to make a turn into the rest of the shopping center. We think that's a, a fine thing operationally, and Chipotle agrees. Most people, when they're picking up their food, are not going to then go shop somewhere else in the center. They're going to go somewhere and eat it, or they'll come back around here, park and, and eat on this patio area that Chipotle also has. The daycare playground is shown in this area here. They'll have multiple access points across their facade to get into it. A six-foot-high fence is proposed here along with bollards at every parking space for safety, and, and then access, like I said, would be through these, this location here or along the sidewalk. Now, I wanted to just talk, oh, well, sorry, here is the elevation of the Chipotle for review. We did make some enhancements to the, to the prototypical Chipotle. This side in particular here, which faces Northwestland originally had just kind of one big, long brick expanse with a canopy over the window. We've added some architectural metal treatments here to break up that facade and a vertical element here, and then Chipotle places their logo in this location, what they call a medallion. Here's a rendering of that same building, this being the Northwestland side and the, the drive-through here, and then this is the patio area with the main entrance kind of facing the, the daycare area and the seven-eleven side of the shopping center. The only elevation changes that are proposed for the main shopping center are to remove the two roll-up doors and replace that with storefront glazing and a door, and then to replace some of the existing glazing on the building with new, new glazing and new doors. Part of the application also includes a comprehensive sign plan amendment for Chipotle. So here's a quick summary of all the signage that Chipotle is applying for. There are the three wall signs, the horizontal wall signs, sign A, which go on this side of the building, the side facing seven-eleven, and then the side facing out here towards Bank of America, and then they have this medallion sign that goes over their pickup window. These two panels are shown here, but they will go on the common shopping center pylons or monuments, which have been approved previously. They'll also just have a pull-up bar height, clearance height bar at the start of the drive-through, and then a digital pickup sign that's shown right here that would go at the entrance to the drive-through as well. So here's an image with, of the building with the signage on. This is a little out of date, doesn't show the metal panels that we're putting on here as well as the additional treatment vertically behind the sign. And that's all I have. Any questions from, question?
I have, I have a question. So how will people know, I mean, other than the app on their phone, that when they see the Chipotle that they, they, it's not your usual drive-through?
Yeah.
Would it be like a sign to say, "Pickup only"?
Yeah, they have the digital pickup sign that they show here, but that is a good question. I would assume if you came through this line and tried to order, that the employee would tell you to pull over and, and order on your phone and come back through. But it's an operational question that I'm, don't have the exact right, or I don't have the exact answer to, but it seems to work for Chipotle is kind of the best I can offer.
Okay.
I had, I had something kind of similar there as well. So there should not be any opportunity to walk up to that window and pick up. That's what I'm concerned about. Will it be signage to say that?
We can certainly request that Chipotle has signage like that. Yeah, I don't, I don't
Because that could be dangerous.
I agree. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I have a concern about the driveway coming out of the pickup. Is there any way of making the curb pointing so you make, automatically make a right, not, not just signage, but actually physically setting it up so that the person cannot make that turn left? Because I can see that, that could cause some confusion, as well as the fact that a lot of people would go back into the parking lot to eat if they wanted to or like to go
Have a look at it. It's so, it's so close to the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we
That's a good point.
It still would stop me. Still would stop you.
I'm still gonna make the left.
It's, yeah. What we're proposing now is two signs here, one, that, it's kind of hard to see. If I can zoom in here.
It's okay.
There we go. Two signs here, which would have "do not enters" on the one side, and then "do not enter" striped here, and then also "no right turns" here. We're just super pinched at the site here with what we have, trying to, trying to
Do a curb cut?
Give them the
Like a curb cut would be forcing the, the person in the car to actually see physically that they have to make a right turn, not a left? Just cutting it out? Is that possible? I'm just throwing it out there.
We have examples where, right at that moment, the, there's a bit of a radius pointing in the direction you can only go, right? That's sort of the, the trick. But there's just not a space to do it here. Yeah, there's just nowhere you can, you can do all that and still have enough, enough, at least a little bit of distance until you're, you're the main street or the Westland Drive.
What we did do was try to widen this island here. This was much narrower in the beginning, so we've, we've shrunk the width of this drive aisle here as you come out, trying to make this less of a, you know, a bigger area here, so you're less likely to make that left. But I, I, you know, I think we're hopeful with the signage, and we have the shopping center sign here as well, that people will be able to make this turn and make this turn without falling.
Yeah, but we're just hopeful.
Yeah, but, but about that, though, where was the analysis that made that a requirement? It's, it's a little messy right now, you know, with, but, but there's also no tenants on that lower level, so it's, it's hard to tell what the kind of traffic would try to come back out and up the, up the, up the main drive that goes up in front of Aldi. I mean, is, is there some kind of a quantifiable way to explain that they're trying to keep or, did staff do this analysis, or you said county, but was it the city that looked at this?
I don't think there was any specific analysis done on this area. I think it was more discussion between staff and, and the city as well, or, sorry, the county as well commented on, on the multiple entrances here, and what we did to address that was widen this area.
How was the county involved? I'm not
So Northwestland is a county road.
Because of that?
Yep.
I have one more.
So, just for sake of argument, I'm just, I'm not making trouble here, but suppose they did turn left up into the shopping center? I mean, what's the, what's the true danger? Because it's, it's all pretty slow and shopping center-like anyway, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we're just try, we're trying to encourage them to make the right, but yeah.
I agree with that.
I mean, if we had the full turn, is it the most dangerous situation? I
It's a fairly low-speed condition.
Hope not. It's a low-speed area.
It's two ways.
Okay. So my only point is, I don't, I, I like discouraging it, but I don't know that, that it has to be so heavy-handed that it's directed lane geometry and all of that.
Be much more worried about if it was a T-intersection at Westland.
Right. Or off of three fifty-five where you were getting somebody really ripping in there at, you know, at speed, yeah.
Matt ripping in there.
Yeah.
Well, they can't catch me.
I had a quick question. Talk to us about the, the, and you, you mentioned that if someone's food wasn't ready, they'd have to pull over. I'm not sure where they'd pull over.
So the area that they would pull over would be right here, so this is just wide enough to fit
Oh, just, okay, they, okay. All right. I was just trying to figure out. Will that be marked or?
Yeah, so Chipotle, they, they, I think what they do, what they do is they instruct the, instruct the driver to just pull off to the side here, and then they hand their food. I think this is a very small percentage of the orders. Most people, you know, when you order for Chipotle pickup, it's ready in five minutes, and so that it, it happens very quickly. I think if it's, if it's about ready, they'll tell them to pull over here. If it's, if it's not, then what they do is, I think, instruct them to go and come back to the line.
I'm just worried about the safety of head.
I have a question.
Okay.
The parking calculation, does that include the upper part of the, of the Aldi or the, where the grocery store is, so we're not really losing any parking spaces that we, it doesn't conform?
Yeah, we have, do you have the total parking number off the top?
Yep. So as part of the annexation agreement, so there's a minimum parking that the overall shopping center has provided, and they're providing
So it's overall the shopping center?
Yeah.
It's not just down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing for parking concerns, too, that we've, both our lease with Chipotle and with Lightbridge stipulates that their employees need to park in this area back here, so we've got them on board with, you know, it's a benefit for both tenants to have their employees parked back here so that there's more room for customers and, and pick up for their clients.
I mean, look at the synergy. You can pick up the young'un and go pick up dinner on one trip.
So I actually had a question about that. So that the children will be dropped off at the front of the daycare center?
So drop off for the daycare, there is no drop-off line. It's a strict policy of Lightbridge that you have to get out and bring your child into the center.
Okay.
So they will be parking, getting their kids out, and walking them in.
No tucking and rolling.
Yeah. Let the door open from the minivan, and they'll just jump out and close it?
Yeah. Any other questions? One thing that, if you would please touch on a bit, is the lighting for, specifically between the Chipotle and Westland, just overall, what the strategy is there?
Yes. So I don't think it made it into this presentation, but the original lighting schedule that we provided for review, which prompted this comment from the county, had two, two overhead poles, one roughly in this location here and one down in this location here. And our lighting designers had designed it so that they were cut off so that there would be no light spillage over the property line, so the sidewalk here and Northwestland was very dark. What we did to address that is we worked with staff, and they okayed us to have light from our, our lights spill on to the sidewalk and the street, and so we will have three lights across the side here.
Okay.
That meet all the county requirements on Northwestland for the wall.
So everything's pull-matter? You have nothing on the building doing any kind of wall packs or anything?
There's no wall packs on the building other than emergency lights.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know what the distance is as you go from the upper parking lot, we call it the, the main parking lot, going down into that area where the new Chipotle will be? Is there like five feet, 10 feet, how many?
Yeah, so it, obviously, you're going up the hill as you come towards, towards Concentra and Aldi here. There's probably, I don't know, 15 or so steps in this existing stairway here, and then it comes down pretty, pretty smoothly. I believe our grade here is under the maximum of, maximum requirement of 8%, and we're kind of like right at that, at that maximum as you come in from here. So the, the existing retaining wall, which I can show you here, is getting cut back a little bit to make room for us to come around there.
All right.
Okay. Gives me some concern.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. I'm going to assume that the three in the audience are all with this application and don't have anything, but maybe you do. Do you have anything to add to the?
Just humor us.
Nothing? All right. And then I'll go to the folks watching online. You know, the routine, please hit the hands up if you want to comment on this application. Give you a minute to do that while we go to, go to the staff's recommendations, and if anything pops up, we'll, we'll turn on the switch and let you speak. So staff recommendation, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings, and recommendation grant SP-10177-2025 final site plan approval and final forest conservation plan ENV-10176-2025, finding it in conformance with Section 24-12.6E and 24-12.6G of the city zoning ordinance with three conditions. One, applicant must submit revised plans to address staff comments related to site plan cleanup to be approved by the planning and department of public works staff prior to final signature of the plans. Two, applicant to continue to work with staff on improving vehicle movement from the drive-through exit prior to final signature of the plans. And three, applicant to submit revised lighting plans to address Montgomery County Department of Transportation comments prior to final signature of the plans.
It kind of sounded like, from the presentation, that condition two about the vehicle movement, that that was pretty well addressed, or is there still some concern?
So that came after we posted the packet, so once they submit us revised plans, staff will look into it further, but discussions, staff was fine with signage.
Okay, so you're just updating the documentation? There's really no missing concept or anything here?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, I'm going to go one more time to, apologize, give me a second. I'm not seeing any flags on the online folks, so. All right, discussion, commissions, commissioners, commissions, commissioners.
I think it's a good addition, and will attract more attention to the shopping center, and it'll also extend the hours, I think, of the shopping center, because again, Chipotle sees open to what, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night? And that's, that's great.
I agree. You know, it was, it was a bank. I never saw a lot of use of that bank. I've been living here for 40 years, and I've never seen a lot there, so.
Thank you, I was.
So I think it's a really good use and a good opportunity for the city in that space.
Thank you.
I do. I just have to say, it's, that's been a lot of dead space for a lot of years, that on a very busy highway, it'd be good economic development, both with the daycare and the fast food, or the casual food.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you. Yeah, we really view this as kind of the last piece of the puzzle for the shopping center, and it's great to kind of put the last piece together.
To that point, I think you all have done a really good job.
Thank you.
With this site.
Appreciate it.
That's, that's, I'm glad you said that.
It's getting a good chunk of my dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I continue to be impressed with, I mean, from the very beginning, as the plans came together for redeveloping or rehabbing Walnut Hill, it's been, it's been really, it's been a real pleasure to see this come as far as it has.
And the mural's a real eye-catcher.
Yeah.
Right. Reimagining, it's been really good.
And this site in particular, I have to compliment you and your, your team on this because it's a wacky site. I mean, with the elevation change, the odd shapes, all of the ins and outs, and, you know, that, that, this, this could be a site planning, you know, exam question right here, how to, how to do something with this, and I think you guys have done a really good job with it, and happy to see that happen because it did kind of fall into sort of like the little stepchild of the rest of the center over the last number of years, right?
Exactly.
It certainly could be.
But that's, that's a good point, because that, like, like going from 7-Eleven up just, it looks daunting. It's not as daunting as it is, but it does look daunting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, just kind of a, it's on the record because we're still talking about it, but just kind of a curiosity category. What, what does the build-out and development of this area look like? Is it immediate, or is it, is there some things still to be worked out?
Yeah, we have signed leases with both tenants, and we're, we're very motivated to get them open as quickly as we can, so we're, we're going to proceed through the rest of the process with site plan and our grading permits and utilities, and we should have a building permit going in in just a week or two for Chipotle and.
Okay, so like the construction at this end could overlap the construction up at the corner for Sheets, I guess?
Yeah, definitely. They'll most likely be going on at the same time. We hope to deliver all this before the end of next year. That's the plan.
Right.
Busy, busy.
Very good. Any other concerns, questions, comments? All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, staff report, findings, and recommendation grant SP-10177-2025 final site plan approval and final forest conservation plan ENV-10176-2025, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-12.6E and 24-12.6G of the city's zoning ordinance with the three conditions as written to the record.
Second.
So moved to second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good-looking project.
Thank you. Y'all need to come with more questions for us.
All right, that takes us to, from the commission, Matt, can I start with you, please?
None for me.
Danny?
Well, it's good to see you, too.
Good to see you, Danny.
And welcome, Isai.
Yeah, welcome.
Is that all?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
How, I have a question for you. How is the state planning activities going?
We just had a regional, yeah, we just had a regional conference. We just held a regional conference in Eldersburg, and, I mean, Elk Ridge, excuse me, and it really went well. We were trying to get something together, and it took us a little while to get it together. Unfortunately, we've lost some, some people on the, on the planning commission. I'm now the secretary treasurer.
And president and vice president.
Chief cook and bottle washer, basically, so, but, but we're trying to hold the organization together because it is a vital and essential organization for the state, so.
So what's the next statewide event, the conference? Is that coming?
No, we, we are still, we haven't figured anything out yet, but we're still, we're going to try to do a joint APA, MPCA thing next year, but nothing's, nothing's written in stone in this yet.
All right.
Keep you posted.
Keep us posted.
Yes.
Lloyd, anything tonight?
Again, I'd like to say congratulations to Public Works on the work that they do, keeping the streets and the leaves off the curbs, and it's a, it's a thankless project, but they really do a great job, and commend the Public Works for what they do.
It's a huge civil project. It's a lot of stuff to move.
Oh, yes.
It's pretty amazing.
And just wait till it starts snowing, and they really shine.
Yeah. Well, we're not going to have snow anymore.
No?
No.
No more snow?
No more snow.
He's calling it.
So says he.
Carol, before I go, I, I should say, for anybody doing transcriptions, that Carol is joining us on the dais tonight as a voting.
Oh, yeah.
I should have said it at the beginning, but for the purposes of taking the role and for the record, as, as not all regular commissioners are here tonight, she is acting as in full capacity as commissioner. So thank you for being here, and.
Thank you.
That way the record is at least clear for.
It's cleared up now.
The dusty, the dusty shelf it ends up on.
For those that were questioning my presence.
Anyway.
I just, just wish everyone a happy holiday season, as in a safe one, too, and stay healthy.
I think we'll do.
Yes, indeed.
Jasmine, anything from?
All right, just want to say that we have one more meeting for this year on December 3rd. So the 2026 calendar has been finalized. It's on the website, but I will be sending commissioners the calendar. And we will also have two work sessions coming up, January 12th and March 23rd, so I'll be pulling the commissioners for that. So, and want to wish everyone a happy holidays.
How does the, how does the December agenda look? Can you know yet, or any?
As of right now, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right.
But tentative is Friday, but I'll know by Friday.
Great. All right. Isai, thanks for being here again. Welcome, welcome to the East Coast.
Thank you. Thank you both.
When, when was your first, first day? When did you start?
I started October 21st.
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 Oh, they've been hiding us. They've been hiding you from us.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Everybody's happy to, happy to see you.
Yes.
Anything from this, this side of the staff?
Also just wanted to welcome Isai to the planning division. We're very excited to have him here, and I'm excited to see him presented for the commission here in the future again. So again, welcome.